Okay, it's six thirty and we are now going to commence with our budget hearing for the 2019 Tufton Borough Budget. We've already determined we have a quorum earlier in our regular meeting at our Pledge of Allegiance, so we're going to dive right into it. How the evening's going to progress is I'm going to go through the budget line by line with any brief explanations that we have. And then, of course, we're going to be talking about anticipated revenue changes for 2019 and we're going to go over the warrant articles as to be presented at the town meeting. If you don't know them, my name's Ford Hennig, Chairman, and the rest of the committee. You can probably judge by the room, I think, probably all know who we are. To the members of the committee, this is I'm not working the vacuum, if somebody pops up here, I say something, do your break. Or if you'd like to add anything, please, by all means do. Before we start, I'd just like to give a couple, just like a preface remarks by a couple things. As you look at the budget and at the paperwork, we have a couple anomalies this year. One is that we have a fifty-three week payroll for the town this year. And keeping that in mind, I asked Diane for a figure for the average, an average weekly payroll for the town, and that comes to $24,254. So just keep that in mind, particularly as you're looking at salary lines. Of course, the selectmen voted a cost of living increase this year of 2.7 percent, as well as the customary step increases. And the, we're also going to be looking at a townwide valuation as planned for 2019. Do you have that? If you have your paperwork, the first line, of course, is line forty-one thirty, which is the executive one. The amount was $105,683. We voted on this on December fifth of eighteen with a five to two vote. A couple of the changes were made. The current position was raised from $2,000 to $3,000 due to the aforementioned revaluation of the town. Joe?
Yeah, I just had a question. We didn't have a clerical assistant last year appropriating $2,000, and now we're up to $3,000. So I'm just trying to understand. I've seen the new clerical assistant, I understand it, and it's all fine and well, but I didn't think we had one in 2018.
Was it right, Joe?
I know we did, but I'm just asking the question, that's all, I'm just curious.
If you look at the extended on 2018, there was nothing expanded from that line? So you're right, we didn't have one.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Thank you.
Next line is number forty-one forty, which is elections, registration, and vital statistics. This line was for $87,434. We voted on this on December fifth eighteen, it was a seven-zero vote. Some of the changes are that there's an anomaly increase in the stipends for election workers, those people who are the town votes, registered people, supervisor's checklist, et cetera. Heather has requested replacement of one printer, as the two printers that we use in her office that had always been provided by the state of New Hampshire, as case of state given them a state take it away. And this is one of their take it away gears. They are no longer going to provide or support those printers, so she has put in for one more. And, of course, there's been one election in 2019 versus multiple elections as we've had the last couple of years. Questions? Okay. Next line is forty-one fifty, which is financial administration. This line was for $131,675. We voted on this January second of this year. The vote was seven-zero. Increases were in the stipend for videography because it was needed. And the other line goes for digitizing of tax maps, which is a process. Do you want? Chip, can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
I'm sorry?
The digitizing of the tax maps, can you just go over that one more time for folks?
Historically, we've had these weeks when the tax maps manually, and she informed us that she was going to end her tenure. So we mean...
Forty years.
Forty years.
Forty years is enough.
Who's going to...
Are you some kind of slacker?
I'm not even forty years old.
Took the opportunity to...
I'm not even forty years old.
Put out an RFP to mark ourselves under the Twenty First Century, and this will also tie in with our assessment company, and everything will be, or almost everything will be available online for everyone to look at. And the price is actually...
Is that in this line item?
Do you...
It's on the next one, I tell you, it's out.
Right. The cost is actually not any different, I don't believe. Thirty-sixteen, it was a little higher, but not significantly higher.
Other questions? Moving on to forty-one fifty-two, which I noted earlier, which is the revaluation property. Our 2018 budget was for $46,372. That has been, have been recommended for the selectmen to $83,500 because this is the year we're going through a revaluation for the town. My line has to be done every five years again, and this is happening to be years, and that's one of those unaccountable expenses, but has to be dealt with all the way through. Questions on that?
Does that mean that somebody's going to come to all of our houses?
Yes, they work. What do you got? What did you do? What didn't you do? That sort of issue. It's one of those great situations where somebody's going to win, somebody's going to lose, but every five years, the losses we have to do, so we do. Next line item is forty-one fifty-three, which is legal. We had voted on earlier, and then it was revised vote on the January second of this year, and it's a six-zero vote. Some of the increases in legal line items were dealing with some of the following. We anticipate there's going to be some legal issues dealing with the Wolfborough Suburb system, RIB system, which is coming into Wolf, now coming into Tufton Borough, as well as there was an increase in the request for legal help for both the trustees, the trust funds, and the cemeteries, as well as legal advice for the Gargantinos' acquisition. Last year's budget was $42,800. We spent $48,733. This year's request was, Budget Committee approved, $53,500. Questions?
Yes, I may be reading this wrong. It says here that 2018 extended requested was $53,352 fourteen, and then on 2019 Budget Committee it says $57,500, at least on this paper I have over here.
I'll just take it right off of our forms, all right?
All right. Well, this one's different.
And we revisited?
Yes.
Yeah, we revisited to bring it to fifty-seven-five.
Okay, I thought you said it backwards, and I may have misheard.
Well, no, it wasn't entirely possible, but I said it backwards because I've been looking at a lot of numbers the last few days.
Okay, good, no problem.
Which I apologize, but no, the line item is for $57,500. Moving on to personnel administration. This is a huge item for the line, a huge line item for the town. It is for $643,564. It was revised vote on February fifth, and there was a vote of five, one abstention. One of the reasons for the revision was that there had been a new hire for the town. The selectmen had budgeted for a complete family plan for health. The Budget Committee announced, perhaps, that perhaps a two-person plan was going to be adequate for that. We had discussed early on in the budget, in the budget process, the urgency that we felt as far as dealing with health insurance was concerned. We are in the second year of a two-year plan, and we feel that this is obviously going to need to be much more scrutinized in this coming year before we go into renewal for the following year. Nothing I can say about health insurance except it keeps coming up, and it's not just us, it's everybody, but as I said, I hope, and I'm going to be able to deal with this Next one is forty-one ninety-one, which is planning and zoning. Line item is for $21,171. We voted on this on December fifth of eighteen, it was a seven-zero vote. Areas of discussion were the subdivision engineering, the zoning, zoning board of appeals, public notices, increases, they're line items, as well as a master plan review by the Lake Street Planning Commission to be completed this year. The master plan was going to be done by the planning board on a volunteer, in-house basis, and it would not be able to be completed, so the Lake Street Planning Commission is going to be finishing for us. Forty-one ninety-four, general government buildings. This line item is for $111,425. We voted on this on October ninth with a six vote, a six-zero vote. Some of the notable spending items are going to be the town office, town office building is $3,000 for some window replacement, as well as fixing some rock. The townhouse in this building is going to have assumed exterior lighting put in because once you turn the lights off in this place, it's awfully dark trying to get into a meeting or out of a meeting, and this is one of them. The library line item is down because we are not pumping our old septic system now, we have, we don't want it installed. And the major line item down was the transfer station because the spectrum installation has not been completed, which was a big budget expense last year, but it's no longer Moving on to forty-one ninety-five, cemetery budget. Line item is for $23,450. We voted on it on December eleventh with a seven-zero vote. One of the increases, a notice of increase is the level for stipend for the section, which was increased from $1,500 to $2,100. Slip and improvements, also we're going to be putting in metal gates at the entrance into the town office cemetery. Questions? Did I miss anything on this?
What?
I didn't miss anything on that, did I? If you're here...
There's going to be three, three more gates.
Three more gates.
So that there will be full vehicle access to all gates, so for the undertaking of the...
Do you mean to put you up as popular? I forget how many knowledge here. Okay, moving on then. Insurance, which, of course, this is our workers' compensation, our property casual insurance. Line item is for $67,578, approved on February second. One of the things we're doing this year is the selectmen opted to put in the, change the tuckable for $1,000 and budget for $2,000 for the tuckable, so that in the event of a loss, that those dollars might necessarily have to come out of that individual department's budget. Questions? Next one is other general government. Huge line item, $475,000. This is for the joint maintenance safety committee, as well as the capital improvements committee's request of some office expense, $475,000. And we vote on that on December eighth, December fifth as well, seven-zero vote. Moving on then. The police department. Police department was a little bit difficult this year because there were multiple revisits. The chief had originally put in for the budget in addition to two part-time officers. Equipment also resulted with those officers. Some paper, a little... Vote was affirmative in our first, our first go-around on this, in December eleventh, at the request of a member, we revisited that to eliminate two of those positions, and the motion failed. And then, at our last meeting, which was February fifth, we had a further revision and based on the new hire that happened within the police department, it was dealt again the original budget, called for, we had approved at $410,983. If you were here earlier this evening, the chief has presented to us a figure because his computers are all going to need to be replaced by the end of this year. That was for $4,775. So the new number for the police department is $415,758, and that was approved this evening. Some of the things that are also going to be happening within the Pledge are besides the new computers, we're going to be adding cell service to one of the additional vehicles, and some of the uniform expenses, they're going to incorporate new body armor.
What was the $18,000 request for new equipment that shouldn't happen?
Go ahead.
For the asking.
I don't know, the fifty-four hundred was ordered...
So it had, there were two portable radios for the part-time officers, those were $3,600 apiece. There was also additional sets of rifle plates. I was going to replace the rifle plates, but we only need to replace one instead of all of them, so that's, that's why it was hired. But then, we went back to it today because the computers had to be replaced, so we backed in there as opposed to...
So it's going to be on that line? It's in that one.
Go ahead, Joe. I listened to Andy earlier, I've listened to him in the past, I disagree with the new computers. I understand he has to do an upgrade, and someone turned around and said, "Well, listen, if you want to use our new software and be online, you need Windows ten." Windows ten is very, it's not, it's, it's less than what he could use. I just don't understand using Windows seven and why you can't upgrade, and also, he says he needs, like, say, five new computers. I just don't understand why you just can't use one and the software instead of buying all new. I have a problem with the computers as far as, you know, people just, yeah, just toss them away, we'll get new ones. When you spend, you're paying for it, you know, I tend to question it. And this is just coming from me, okay, just being partially literate as far as computers are concerned. I haven't had any other conversations, I'm just voicing my opinion right now. And on the same breath, the amount of software we use in this town is enormous, between the tax collector, Heather, and Andy. It seems to me that it should be at least looked at in the future. I mean, we take our insurance policies, and we go through a fine-toothed comb, but this is another area that should be looked at. Again, my opinion, and thanks for listening.
Thank you. I don't want to speak for the chief, but I will speak for the chief this occasion. The fact that he said that the computer's eight years old, okay, I can understand a software upgrade, but eight years, when you get to eight years usable life of a break, of even a house computer now, if something goes south on that, just trying to get it fixed is nearly impossible. All right, so it's not an expense that we're looking forward to, but obviously, if you can't communicate with the rest of the world through its existing system. I do agree to the, however, that, you know, one of the tasks for the selectmen next year might be to look at our entire computer structure within the town, and try and do some stream mighty.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the page? Okay. Moving on to forty-two fifteen, ambulance. Line item is for $192,480. We voted on this on December twelfth with a seven-zero vote. This is a one-year contract with two-and-a-half percent increase. Chief Thompson spoke to us on this matter, also, there's some investigating going into, looking at becoming a member of a consortium of the towns for ambulance service, and as we sit by now, this is still a one-year, one item, one contract year.
So is the other, our ambulance, our home ambulance is in what line item? The expenses for that, you know, under, spread out of the vehicles and personnel and...
Our own ambulance, as far as that goes, is operated through the department as far as that goes. There, there is a new line item as far as for billing.
On eleven...
For the, for the ambulance wise, both on the revenue and on the side, we have, we have to pay the billing company eight percent of the money that we actually bring in, how they, they get paid for doing the billing, and that, that is under ambulance billing. It used to be under dues and subscriptions, as far as last year was, and...
Some of this medical rescue billing?
Yeah, so we have a...
Fuel maintenance.
That, that's all incorporated into fuel maintenance. It's all basically brought out into those different budgets of, of my, my side of my side, and I can give you whatever information that you're looking for.
Do you keep a separate track of the specific rescue costs?
So as far as, as far as, we normally would go out to the homes and do first response, so we're using equipment anyway. So we're basically not using any more equipment than we would already, besides that, you know, we're going out with ambulants instead of, like, a rescue truck or multiple vehicles as far as it goes, and we have the option to transport if we want. So, for example, between eleven fifteen seventeen and twelve twenty-nine eighteen, we brought in $17,182.62. That's $17,182.62 that we never had the opportunity to bill before, as far as, because we didn't transport.
On half, afterdate percent?
Yes.
So that's just the transport fees?
Yes, and that, and that's what we brought in. That's not what we, we build out as far as that goes. But the ambulance billing is all, all done through equipment's claim, and we, we paid $1,084 and some odd cents last year for ambulance, so I budgeted $2,000 this year for that.
Carl?
Giving that to the, their short ambulance contract, have the terms of that changed months since last year? You said this is just a one-year contract.
Correct.
We still have our own assigned ambulance.
Yes, it, the ambulance either comes from Moltenboro or Wolfboro, depending on what side of town it's on, and what units are, are tied up. For example, today, Wolfboro's second ambulance was out of town, and the ambulance that usually comes down in stages at our fire station or somewhere close here, I'm sure everyone's seen Stuart's ambulance sitting somewhere, like, in the middle of town, hadn't done that yet, and so we were called to Wolfboro for, to back them up. Probably about two hours later, we were called for a medical call, responded to that, a Stuart's unit came from Moltenboro because it was on 171. In the meantime, we had a second call come in, and Stuart's unit from Wolfboro handled that one. So there is, sometimes, you know, they'll have two ambulances available, but if, for some reason, they didn't have a second ambulance available, which they're not under contract to do so, then we would have taken that call on 171 and diverted the, the original ambulance to the, the second call, which we've done quite a few times now, so...
Thank you.
I have another follow-up question. Have you had to change your personnel training or anything like that? Have you had any difficulty getting enough personnel?
We haven't had to change the personnel training because we're, we're trained from EMT to paramedic level, and those people are going out on the calls. As far as getting people to, to come out on the calls, at nighttime, you know, between 1:00 AM and 7:00 AM in the morning is a tough time for us, and it's a tough time for a lot of different departments as far as it goes, because people are getting ready to go to work and stuff like that. But we have not, not responding to, responding to a call as far as it goes, but we would have been able to transport them, every one of them in some cases, because you need to have two licensed personnel, that goes out on the rig to transport, and, you know, you might have a time period that you only have one person that is able to, to come out to do so, and there may be someone else that can help for like an hour, you know, because he's plowing or whatever, so he comes to the call, helps get the patient loaded into, into Stuart's, and goes from there. We would not be able to, right now, I don't believe that we'd be able to run the ambulance service, you know, a hundred percent ourselves, just because you, you need to make sure that you have two people, you know, constantly, 24 hours a day, as far as it goes. But again, we haven't missed a call, I've been going out and, and doing first response, and, and the ambulance has obviously been very detrimental in some cases. We've done, we've done 26 transports since, what was that, the 11/17, as far as we've already, and that's because of multiple calls and multiple patients.
Would it ever be possible to contract with Stuart's for only, you know, midnight to AM or whatever?
Well, I actually asked that of them, and they didn't want to give me an answer at the time because they were, they were going through other contract discussions with other towns and stuff, and they were afraid that that was going to affect that. I'm sure that as we go along, you know, in the coming year, we could dig into things a little bit further to see what we actually can do, and... Well, I actually asked that of them, and they didn't want to give me an answer at the time because they were, uh, they were, um, going through other contract, uh, discussions with other towns and stuff, and they were afraid that that was going to affect, uh, that. I'm sure that as we go along, you know, in the coming year, we could dig into things a little bit further to see what we actually can do and where we can actually save, you know, further money with that. The, uh, looking at the consortium, it didn't look like it was a, a vital option as far as that we're going to save a lot of money. It looks like it would be better, you know, they would make out more, uh, on their end than we would on our side as far as things, because they would make the decision on, you know, where the money breakdown is. So we wouldn't have a huge savings. Um, it, it looked like there was like a five thousand dollar savings for that. Um, and five thousand dollars not to have a guaranteed ambulance, I don't believe is a lot of money. Um, but, you know, if it was more like thirty thousand or forty thousand dollars, um, but they were going to take, not under the thirty or forty thousand dollars that was going to be saved, that was going to be split up between like five towns, and, uh, we weren't getting, so.
Could I ask one question in regards to that? Is it true then with the consortium, if, say, five towns are in that, um, and one drops out, the other four are left holding the balance of the contract no matter what?
Yeah, give a response.
Other questions on the ambulance? Okay, moving on then to forty-two twenty, which is the overall fire department budget. Uh, we voted on this early and had a revision on, voted on on November fifteenth, eighteen. Four hundred forty-nine thousand two hundred and eight dollars, five all vote. Uh, some of the, some of the things that popped up this year with that. Uh, the firefighters' allowance is down this year because, of course, they're only paid on an on-call basis and fewer people showing up, which is not necessarily a good thing, but as Adam was just saying, it's a fact of life. Uh, there's a new line item for two thousand dollars in medical rescue billing, which is not, it hasn't been there before. We have to expense it in order to, uh, to, and that should be offset by revenue. Under vehicle maintenance, there's, uh, some items for the fail-safe hose testing program, as well as a stair chair maintenance for the engine too.
Do you have the stair chair, excuse me, the stair chair maintenance and the stair chair maintenance is, uh, um, a testing for the, uh, the structure of the stair chair that's carried on the ambulance to make sure that it passes all of its standards every year. As far as, uh, the budget-wise, if there's any questions with that, I'm more than, I can answer whenever I can. Uh, we, a lot of the different stuff, um, is affected by the fifty-three weeks and the, uh, the two point seven percent. We did not choose to go with the, uh, the steps or killed them myself, um, which was a three thousand thirty-eight dollar difference, not a big thing, um, but it was a somewhat of a saving for, uh, for that particular account. Um, as far as overall expenditures, the, uh, the different line items did not increase substantially. Um, but the, uh, again, the salary side of the thing did, uh, change with, with the fifty-three weeks and especially.
The only thing I was going to mention is the fuel line increased obviously due to anticipated, uh, fuel costs. And just for people, people of personal identification, this line right here says, "Chief and Captain declined merit increases to keep their costs down," as far as that goes. Thank you very much.
Fuel-wise, when, when I went through the fuel, I, I found that we were losing more than what we had, uh, had budgeted for as far as it goes, so I went back, tried to recalculate that. Um, there's some disagreement on whether it's going to be quite that much. It probably will not be quite that much after looking to see, um, how we ended up at the end of the year. Um, but we, I felt that, uh, I did not want to go over that particular line item, you know, too many years in the road, um, by budgeting too little for that, so.
Further questions on the fire? Moving on then to building inspection. Figure this one will be sixty-five thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars. We vote on it on October thirteenth of eighteen, it's a five-one vote. Uh, one of the items that jumps out is the vehicle maintenance line, went from two thousand to one thousand dollars because, of course, we have a new truck for the co's office officer, and so, uh, new truck shouldn't need as much work as the old truck did, obviously. Questions on building? Okay, moving on then to forty-two ninety, emergency management. This item is fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars, we voted on this October ninth, it's a six-zero vote.
We got the change for emergency management under grants and hazard mitigations. Our, our emergency operation plan is due to be upgraded this year. Uh, it actually went out last year as far as ago, we've been working on that. But if for some reason we fail to be able to finish that ourselves, um, I had put, uh, four thousand dollars into that, um, that particular line item to have someone, second party, come in and, and complete that for us. Obviously, we would have to have a committee put together to, uh, to sit down and work with them as far as it goes, like we have in the past. But that would cover that being, uh, the emergency operation plan being completed by someone else coming in to, to do it if we failed to, uh, to do so. If we're able to complete it for ourselves, then that, uh, that money will not be spent. It'll, uh, will be left in the budget for that.
No questions on that, moving on to forty-three twelve, highways and streets. Line item's a four hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, we approved this after a considerable amount of discussion on December fifth of eighteen with a six-one vote. Highway, it's just been a very diff, dealing with highway departments has been a very difficult road just because of the circumstances where we're dealing with. The increase in the winter maintenance costs last year were dramatic to the point that an awful lot of the summer maintenance just was not done. For example, roadside milling, crack sealing, apron paving, just didn't get done because rotation and security's having all so much snow. Good news is that, uh, the culvert study that had been on, taking about a town has been done, as well as a paving study has been done, so that we are now have a much more clear picture of what we're going to have to do to maintain our roads to the level that we hope to be able to deal with them on an ongoing basis. Snow is expensive.
So in the summer maintenance, it's not like we saved forty thousand dollars, it's that we spent it on winter?
We didn't save anything, no, we expended budget, we just didn't have the money to do it.
Okay.
When the snow's coming...
Because when you look at it, it's like, oh, we underspent it by forty thousand dollars.
Right, but it just, it just didn't get done.
Yeah.
Sort of like Amazon, you know, people in New York say, "Amazon's not coming." Like, "Oh, they're going to get, they're going to save three billion dollars, not going to save anything."
It's not coming.
They're not coming, so it's like the city have to check for three billion dollars to pay that or not.
Exactly.
So it just, it just didn't get done. And that's, that's an untenable position going forward, because we, we have to budget. And obviously, we know that, you know, getting rid of the snow is expensive and paving is also expensive, but you still have to do other things over the course of the year.
And, and it's, the pattern has been that the summer maintenance doesn't get done. And it's not good for the roads.
No, it's not.
They're breaking down rapidly. They're complaining about for a number of years now. And, uh, they, they still, they don't, you gotta spend that money on the roadside maintenance on your ditches. Not just the culvert, so they look every few years.
Well, last year, winter maintenance was, was budgeted at a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. Of course, anyway, it's been tuned, uh, this year, it's gone to two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and hopefully that'll get us through. Once again, a big old, a couple of snows going into March, one or two in April, you really wreck havoc. Which is a problem with any kind of budget, you know, I kind of do this with a crystal ball on your head. Have to get the summer stuff done. Any other questions on highways and streets? And moving on to other highways and streets. So I had an item for sixteen thousand two hundred dollars, we voted on January second, seven zero vote. The projects that want to be done this year are Lake Road, uh, and Worf at Union Wharf, as well as, uh, as well as permitting fees for these projects. Question? Forty-three twenty-four, solid waste. Line item this year was voted on originally, we revisited on February twenty-second for final vote. For line item, four hundred seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. It was a five all and one extension vote. Getting rid of trash is very expensive, and we have some, uh, plastic disposal costs this year went from forty-five dollars to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton. The, uh, the construction and the debris went, is fifteen to twenty percent higher. Therefore, there's a thirteen thousand dollar increase in dealing with that. And the overall fact of matters in markets for recyclables is very depressed, so.
The construction debris was actually twenty-five percent more.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in the revisit, we went and added more money into the construction debris removal.
You guys have to tell a client, people have, I don't like to, I don't like to call so many things, but there's so many highs.
Yeah, we added, uh, in the revisit, we added, uh, two hundred dollars to the fuel line, which is, uh, was eight hundred dollars, I think, and now it's a thousand. And that primarily, again, like the road department, when you have that much snow removal, we're operating that tobacco and bobcat, you know, twenty-four seven. So we're going to go through more fuel than what we had in the past. Last two winters, uh, have been especially tough. And the major new item this year will be tires for the tobacco.
I would also like to compliment Clay on his avoided costs, he still saves money, saves a ton of a considerable amount of money every year by actions that the solid facility to save us money by not, uh, doing things that we don't have to pay for ourselves.
Right, uh, yeah, a lot of, a, a lot of the towns' position, uh, went to single screen, and right now is a bad time for single screen. Um, you end up paying as much as you would have ended up paying if you threw it away and basically made a compact, if not more. We're still by selective, uh, recycling, we're still collecting money on individual items. And a good example is aluminum cans. While you still make good money on aluminum cans, we'll probably make twenty thousand dollars this year on aluminum cans. Cardboard, uh, we'll make, uh, probably ninety tons of cardboard to go out this year, and we'll probably make ten thousand on that.
But the market, I would you doubt, might should...
The market is there considerably from what it used to be. Um, mixed papers still, uh, you have to pay a lot, just try to get rid of it if you can, so.
Is there a market for newsprint?
Um, there is market for newsprint, our, our problem is we just wouldn't generate enough to make it worthwhile, the labor unveiling it, and, you know, every time you do something, you have to crave on the grave, uh, even though the labor's still there, you know? I mean, you know, you bounce from one thing to another, but you have to compute how much would it cost to create and generate that material, and then how much would you save? What's the avoided cost? Uh, the way I look at it, as long as, as you have a positive avoided cost savings, it's worth doing, so.
Other questions on solid waste? Moving on to four-four one-four, animal control, item for seventeen hundred fifty dollars. We voted on it on February second this year, which is seven zero vote. Of course, the largest, uh, the largest line item for that is our contract with the, uh, Big Street Domain Society. Questions? Moving on to forty-four fifteen, health agencies, for forty thousand one dollar. This was adapted on, uh, on February twenty-second, it was a six-zero vote. These are, of course, all the, uh, the local health agencies that apply every year for, uh, for funds from the town. Uh, the dollars are, they submit their requests, they try to show how many people, how many citizens in the town are affected by their services. Uh, the selectmen make their judgments based on that, and that's where the line came from.
It looks like it should be forty thousand two dollars.
You got a nine and a two, that's how you end up with the one.
Oh, it's two to nine.
Yeah. See, up near the top, twenty-one forty-nine.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All I know is whatever you, the neighbors, that's right here. Uh, one of the things is share White Horse Addiction Center, who, uh, asked money for this year. They have not done that in the past, and, uh, that was granted by the selectmen, and they go for a senior center, did not ask them for any money this year, and I cannot but wonder if that's a function of whether that building is going to be in existence much longer. If you read the Grand State News, they seem to have some major problems with that building, so they didn't ask for any money.
In coordinate, the White House is the key center, last year was a warrant article.
Right, that's right, I'm sorry, if you make your product, it's warrant article last year, this year, when there's a...
The selectmen, the selectmen made that, um, policy decision to, if a new, um, health agency comes on board, we want to put the people before we add to the budget, so last year, White Horse put on the warrant article, is approved by the facilities, so we can include it in our list for sure.
Other questions on health agencies? Moving on, number four-four four-two, direct assistance. This is money for, uh, line item of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. We voted on it on February second, it's a seven zero vote. This is, of course, for, uh, people within our own community who need some help up, will see their issues. Nothing, a whole lot changes here from last year?
Is there criteria for miscellaneous? Seems kind of broad.
I'm sorry?
Is there criteria for miscellaneous? Seems kind of broad.
There are actually, if you want to come down with a lot of welfare application, there are a number of different things that, that are available to you for, that don't include cable television and that sort of thing, but it's just different families that need welfare have different needs to. One of the reasons we, we reduce a couple of these numbers, the food and miscellaneous, um, and the fuel, is that local churches and other organizations have been stepping up, so that it isn't only on the town to provide that.
Are, are those organizations that are stepping up in that way, are they the ones that we're funding here in the previous section?
No, no, no.
Shouldn't we be funding those organizations?
Melville Church has done a lot for different... Melville Church has done a lot for different welfare recipients. There are a couple other churches, and we don't support religious organizations through the government. So they're not gonna be part of our health agencies, they're just, they'll give. What will happen is a phone call will be made, and somebody's electric bill will be paid, or whatever their, their needs are. So it's a collaborative.
Does the town refer people to the churches or?
When there's a specific need that seems to fall within the parameters of what the churches, et cetera, have given them in the past, we might give them a call and see if they have funds available.
That's great.
Further questions on all of them? Moving on, forty-five-twenty, Parks and Recreation, line item fifty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars. We voted on this on the, on the fifteenth of November, it was a five-one vote. The notable change this year is that Gina is no longer going to be able to do enough of the work as she had done in the past. And so there is a line item this year to replace the aquatics director with a part-time parks director. And it's a change in standard, a change in salary from twenty-five hundred to fifteen thousand dollars. There's also, as she knows, there's a problem finding lifeguards, because they're spotty, they had traditionally been spotty hours. Young, traditionally young people, you know, college students, high school kids have taken those positions, and I would marry their lifeguard forever. And as were sisters. They need more hours because of the, you know, the jumping from job to job, trying to fit their lifeguards in versus, you know, doing another job. And so the, the recommendation was to make them more of a full-time, you know, give them more hours in summertime. In an, in an effort to recruit, because it's getting hard to, very hard to recruit these young folks.
So the Parks and Rec new position, or expanded position, is that the year-round deal, or is it mostly a summer deal, or we don't know?
At this time, we're not.
Well, there are a number of different things that happen during the course of the year, upon a week, as well as the swimming program.
So it's an hourly position?
Right, an as-needed position, first running the meetings. I mean, and it's just a simple result of the lack of volunteerism. And the selectmen made the statement that if you don't get to volunteer, then we're gonna have to hire somebody, we're not gonna do away with the Parks and Rec.
Gina has done a tremendous job.
Tremendous amount, right. And there is a significant revenue stream coming in on Parks and Rec that needs to get managed as well. And they're limited, they, you can't just spin money into a, into a general fund. It has to be spent on Parks and Rec, so. Money coming in from the concerts, et cetera.
And they have provided money for the town's fellowship fund too.
Right.
Any other question? Moving on to the library. This year, the line item is for two thousand, two hundred and seventeen thousand, seventy-nine dollars. We voted on this on the summer fifth, it was a six-one vote. Taking salaries out of the equation, the budget this year is one thousand, six hundred and forty dollars less than it was last year. As the question comes up, I don't know if it's gonna come up again this year, is that per RSA, when we, the library budget is developed, you have to budget, you have to budget for the full amount. This, of course, is offset by anticipated revenue, what, eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars this year through library sources. But you have to budget it in order to have an offset. Always very confusing. But I see this as a season of crowds. Questions on the library budget?
No, I, I didn't understand what you said. You said we took the salaries out of it, it was a level budget, is that what you said?
No, I said if you take, if you take salaries out of the equation, not counting salaries, you just look at the library budget, it's sixteen hundred and forty dollars less than it was last year.
He's taking out the, you gotta take out the eighteen thousand, 'cause here it says it's fifteen thousand more.
Yeah.
But if you take out the eighteen thousand, it's less.
How do we register, well, we don't have a, we don't have a.
Because they're gonna collect. By the way, is there a statutory requirement that the library cards be free?
No. Could they be free?
Yeah.
Wolfboro churches?
They're free for anyone in town, anyone who lives in town, and anyone who lives in town or rents in town.
But is that statutorily required, or is that just a decision that we've made?
No, I think that's required. Nobody has to pay for a library card. You, you pay for it through your taxes.
However, if you were, if you were in, and we are seeing this now, not a huge influx, but there are people who are coming from Wolfboro to use the Tuckton Borough Library, they have to pay through the library card.
If you pay for your library card, you own it, and the librarian cannot revoke it. When I had my library card revoked, it was quite a long time ago. I actually had an ownership interest in that library card, I would never do that.
What did you do?
I was nine.
It wasn't me.
Even then, huh?
Even then.
But we are seeing people coming in, some folks from Wolfboro just don't wanna deal, trying to get into what they do right now with their, with their expansion. So they're coming to Wolfboro, telling Tuckton Borough to use our system.
I wasn't suggesting anything, I was just curious.
And we're getting a lot of compliments from them, which is a nice thing to hear.
Oh, yeah, the next one.
Other questions on the library? Patriotic purposes, we had all line items, has been historically, we voted on that on February second. It was a seven-zero vote. This is for patriotic purposes, it flags out cemetery, memorial, that sort of thing. Questions? Gifts and donations, nine forty-five eighty-nine, this is for five hundred dollars. We voted on this February second, it was a seven-zero vote. Of course, this goes for, something happened to somebody in the community, something, it's a loss. And the town wants to do something more than just to send a card, or it's just the town's way of saying thank you to people who perhaps have served a town for, you know, a fair amount, amount of time. That's what it's for.
Well, it also offsets a revenue account for gifts and donations. So it allows people to give money for a specific purpose, and this is the account that allows you to spend it. So without this, you couldn't spend it for what it is.
Forty-six twelve, then, conservation. Sixteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. We voted on this on the fifteenth of November, it was a six-zero vote. This line item is, is, budget is down from last year. Notably because the administrative assistant line was dropped from nine thousand eighty dollars down to request a budget of five thousand, of fifty-three hundred and four dollars. Moving on then, forty-six nineteen, other conservation. Line item is twenty-eighth, sir.
I'm sorry, I realized I had a question about the, back on the library budget. For the two thousand and eighteen budget, it's the same as, as two thousand and eighteen extended. Isn't we've been in the same situation last year where there was income? Shouldn't the budgeted be higher? Does, does that make sense what I'm saying?
Are you talking about for next year, for this year that we're in?
Uh, well, where it says eight, two thousand and eighteen budget.
Was two hundred and twelve thousand for twenty-eight, right?
Just looking at eight, 'cause I mean, off the bottom.
Yeah, library budget, two thousand and eighteen budget, forty thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight. Two thousand and eighteen extended, forty thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight. Shouldn't that second number be less?
No, it's better.
We did.
That's not gonna reflect the income, is that your question?
Yeah, I was saying, shouldn't that be offset by whatever it was last year?
The income's gonna come in on the income side of it, but it's not gonna alter anything.
Oh, okay, but this doesn't, that, that forty thousand that was spent, however much it was, came from collection?
The thousand town.
No, it came from the town.
That's the town, then.
This is the town one, which will not be over all.
The fifty-five is the overall. The fifty-five, yeah.
So the town spent forty thousand last year?
Right.
And this year, we're gonna spend fifty-five?
The town budgeted, budgeted forty thousand dollars last year. And then the collection comes in on the revenue side. We're budgeting fifty-five this year, and then there's offsetting collection that'll be reflected on the revenue side. That's how it works.
Where does that money go?
It goes into our general fund. You mean the revenue?
Revenue goes into the general fund, okay. Next.
Except for the stuff that I used to take in a condo.
The books into the condo.
Okay, we started again on forty-six nineteen, other conservation, twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Pat, let's see, the big change this year was the bill, which was not dealt with last year, but is gonna be dealt with this year. Questions on that one? Okay, the next one then is forty-seven eleven, which are long-term notes, line item is for a hundred and fifty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. voted on February second, seven-zero vote, this is the payment on the bond for the fire carbon code. And last but not least is forty-seven twenty-one, interest on long-term notes, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. voted on again on February second, seven-zero vote, this is the interest asset bond. And that gets us through the budget. Give you this grant code, including tonight's actions, we replaced our computers of three million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and seven dollars.
What are the handwritten notes?
Okay.
What are the handwritten notes about encumbered funds and library revenue and?
The reference case eighteen?
Yes.
Those are, those are notes that Diane made for us, so that we could see what sort of funds were encumbered. Because some of the projects that we had for eighteen have not done in eighteen, are gonna get done in nineteen, or finished in nineteen. And also trying to establish where an undesigned at front balance is gonna end up. And then the revenue from the libraries reflected in those notes, I think, too.
Yeah. What about the revenue from the transfer station?
Revenue from the transfer station's gonna get, is in the revenues that it would for, I think we're gonna review those at some point in time.
But that library revenue will also be in the revenue statement, right? It's left over from another year.
Yeah, on that twenty nineteen estimated revenue sheet, it says department's income, including library. The library's listed six thousand five hundred and seventy.
The library is reflected in the revenue sheet that you can get. What, what you're looking at there is a note from our bookkeeper, giving us a tally. So if you wanna wrap yourself around that so you can, but I think one of us, either I asked, or Bill asked, or Lloyd asked, for a general account, so we know how it can end it. 'Cause that's important to us going forward.
I think that some of it was confusing on the earlier discussion, because it got that same number.
The eighteen four fifty?
Yeah, the eighteen four fifty shows on the earlier library page. Down here.
It doesn't show the library, well, it shows, it's half, print it out, if you look back at the library page. It puts a number, but it doesn't, doesn't extrapolate the whole thing out. I agree with you.
If you look, I don't know, when we get to the revenues, and you look at line thirty-four oh one, it's library revenue. And it was listed as eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty for two thousand and eighteen. So it is the one you had over there on the revenue side of the budget. It's just, the last, the last card bookkeeper has to make notes on, on copies in future.
So the forty thousand dollar number on page fifteen is the actual expense, I guess. But even that, or if you have to add eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-two, that's to get the actual expense.
Yes, you do. Yeah, so this forty thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight is the town expense.
I thought you said the forty thousand included, though.
Eighteen four fifty.
Or whatever it was that I heard.
Has to be added in.
I'm not trying to be difficult.
Oh, no, no, I understand that, it's just the way that you.
Yeah, everything, so this, is this forty thousand the correct number, or should it be fifty-eight thousand?
It's the correct, forty thousand's the town expense.
Which it makes fifty-five thousand for two thousand and nineteen seem more realistic.
Well, it is, 'cause that's the total, if, as you can see from this sheet.
Yes.
If I can jump in for just a second, the library takes care of their own bills. They, they have, they have a treasurer, they take care of all their own expenses. They get money from the town that's budgeted. We have to budget gross, so the budget you see for twenty nineteen includes library revenue that they're gonna apply toward their expenses, as well as revenue coming from taxpayers. The reason that Diane puts little notes down here is because their accounting for bills that come in and all that are on a different system than what the town uses, because they do their own accounting. Because they do their own accounting, they're accountable to the library board. And just like we send, we, we provide revenue to other taxing entities, the library doesn't tax separately, but they are governed separately within the town. So, that's why we're seeing, we have to budget for everything, but what we track during the year is what actually comes out of town coffers going to the library. Does that, does that clarify?
I know that's the way it looks, but I don't understand the way it's displayed on this paper. Because it says the 2018 budget was 40,228 dollars.
And, and that's the, that is the portion that comes out of town revenue?
Right.
All right. But what's shown for 2019 is what we have to approve at town meeting, which is the gross amount of expense. But it is, but it is confusing that it's displayed differently, that we're looking at net in the current year and we're looking at gross in 2019.
That's true, yes.
Right.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, well, how it's.
So, you have to add, you have to add library revenue back into the 2018 numbers so that you're looking at apples and apples.
That's why I thought that the budgeted number should be higher than the extended number for 2018 last year. Because last year was the budgeted more.
Y'all spare a moment, how's this working?
All right, that's right.
It's tape, I understand. Other questions on the, on the overall budget? At this point, I think we need to vote on it. We're dealing now with our changes this evening. With a overall recommended budget by the budget committee of 3,975 dollars, 307 dollars, excuse me. 3,975, 307.
We reconvene with the budget committee, we only have to hear it.
I think we only need to hear it. Do we have a motion?
I don't think that we can approve that enough.
3,975,000, 307. Is there a second?
Second.
We moved to second. Do we have any discussion on the overall operating budget?
I'm happy with 8%. There were a few questions last night.
No, I'm not happy with it, but I believe that's what it is. Yeah.
8% on the budget, that's not necessarily 8% on the expenditures, that's. That's a crystal ball. Never going to know until.
No, it's still the last year, it's 4%.
But I also know we went through, you hear, every line item, week after week, meeting after meeting, discussed it, had presentations, and when we voted, we felt it was the right vote. And then it all added up, and this is the number we got.
And if we say, if it's three weeks of payroll, town appropriate revaluation, always things that pop up this year that won't be there next year. It's like having your friends blow it out your house, you weren't planning on it, but it just happens, and then you deal with it once and you won't have to deal with it next year. We go. We have a motion, it's been seconded, is there further discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm abstaining from voting. The selectmen already have voted to approve 2,982,556.
So, it's 5, 1, 1 vote, then.
And who was the opposition?
Pardon me?
Who was?
Me.
Yeah.
Okay, warrant articles. I'm going to read two of the warrant articles. I'd like to make a, need a reading, need a reading for yourself, or would you like a full copy of them? Who would you give a response?
There's paper copy on it. There's paper copy on it.
For benefit of the camera, I think I'm going to read them. Article four that we'll be voting on at town meeting is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 1,862,000 dollars to renovate and expand the current library building. Said project will be funded as follows. Draw of 355,500 dollars in existing library capital reserve fund and 1,173,500 dollars to library capital donations fund and pledges, with 333,000 dollars to be raised from taxation. The special warrant article will be non-lapsing, propagation per RSA 32:76. It will not lapse until library expansion or renovations are completed, or by December 31st, 2023, whichever is sooner. At, shoot. At the town meeting. I think that there will be an amendment to, offered to this article to, because of the year 333,000 dollars. As we've discussed, if you're not familiar with the history of the last six months, we've got an incredible donation from an individual. 525,000 dollars in one gift, and that was followed by another 50,000 dollar gift from the foundation the same week. It was like mono from heaven, as they say. Really changed the complexion of none of the library, but for the whole town. As to what we're going to have to do for our capital spending down the road. Right now, we're 333,000 dollars. I can tell you right now by our figures at the library, if you take cash, pledges, and capital reserves, we're at 1,668,076 dollars. All right, so, needed to be raised now, we're at 328,924, with, you know, a few weeks still to go. It's not coming in, you know, in droves, but we were, by frankly, we were, once the news came out about that 5,000 dollars plus gift, I think people might have said, "Well, you've done it," so thank you very much. The warrant article calls for 1,862,000 dollars. The total project cost, the addition is 1,997 dollars. The difference is that the selectmen and trustees jointly decided that effort to get our best pricing and get the project off the ground as quickly as we possibly could, that we would advance and get the plans done in advance of town meetings. So, 67,500 dollars is coming from the capital reserve fund from town. The other 67,500 dollars is coming from the library funds. That's the difference between the project costs and the, and the warrant article cost.
So, the capital reserve fund that the town had was really like 430?
Right now, it was showing as, oh, sorry, actually, 424,000.
355 plus the one half of the plan.
Yes. Other questions on this warrant?
Is that half a million in the bank?
Pardon me?
That's in the bank.
Oh, yeah. It was gift, it was a gift of capital stock.
Yeah.
The library now has a continuing resolution that if somebody gives us capital stock, we sell it that day. And because, one of the, I'm ashamed to say it, the stock hit our fidelity account, and it just happened on one of those things, as it did within that few days. Started getting, and we'll remember the end of the year, the stock market, things started to go south very, very quickly, and we sold it. And I see the dashboard, the fidelity dashboard every day, and I, and my own perverse sense of humor. I, I still track those particular offerings and see, well, we, what, what happened, we hadn't. Now, things have come up a little bit in January, but had we not sold that stock, and we did, we would have been down almost quite 50,000 dollars when it hit our account to what we sold. So, if you'd like to say, well, you want to be in life, lucky or good. In this case, I'll say I'll take lucky every time.
Good luck.
Hmm, good luck, better. Okay, any other questions on the library warrant article? Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 16,600 dollars, 60 dollars, should be to update tax maps and then TIS mapping. This was recommended by the selectman 3-0 and the budget committee 6-0.
How is this different from the budget item for tax map?
This is to digitize it, I would be correct.
This is, this is the new maps that only generate, that'll be overloaded on the satellite imagery on the computer. And the, the amount in the line item of the budget is for the annual updating.
Ah, gotcha. So, this is a one-time.
This is a one-time, so.
Which if we'd done it 10 years ago, we first talked about it, would have been probably 150 to 200,000. Technology has changed somewhat.
That's why I was asking you.
And soon we took it out of your hide for an additional 10 years till we got to this point.
Before we move on, by the way, I neglected to mention on the library warrant article that the recommendations of board selectmen was 3-0 and the budget committee was a 5-0 with one extension. Article five was approved, 3060 across the board. Other questions on the article? Article 6 of the C of the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 285,000 dollars for preparation of paving of town roads, recommended by the selectman 3-0 and the budget committee 6-0. I still miss, I do miss the phrase "special for tar." I think that will always be a warm spark in my, my memory, but this is obviously the rotting, it's the taring of the roads every year. There had been discussion that perhaps this was not enough, but with, with a road survey not being taken care of, I think we're going to be able to get a much better handle on it in the future.
So, next year, we'll follow the results of that?
Actually, this is, this is comporting with the pavement study that was done by, I don't like to say the name.
Oh, this is.
So, it's, it's an ongoing process, it'll, the cost will escalate a bit, but we're doing different procedures to try to stay within some reasonable amount.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Article 7, C of the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 15,000 dollars for the preparation of Sawyer Road for paving, recommended by the selectman 3-0 and the budget committee 5-1. This is to get the road ready to pave, and then the paving itself is going to come out of.
Right. The reason this, the reason there's a warrant article here for this particular road is that there was a vote by the town a few years ago not to include Sawyer Road in the paving schedule. So, this is a revisit. We're, we're asking the town if we should prepare it for paving. And if it's voted yes, then we're going to assume that their minds have changed. If it's voted no, then we're going to assume that they're, they're standing by their position about paving the Sawyer Road.
So, the person that led the charge to not have it paved is, he wanted to pave it, right?
And I don't, I don't know that we ever consulted him. I mean, we, we had some complaints about dust, and we had some complaints about drainage.
Well, he sold his house up there to somebody else, right?
What if it's not, he still lives there?
There's another house in there that somebody's living out there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's just an issue that came up and we were asked, and I think the road agent weighed in on it. So, here it is. It's the last, there's only one section I, I believe, left of Sawyer Road that remains unpage. Kind of like the spike fence of the road, road stuff.
Article eight is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of, I'm sorry, wait.
On Sawyer Road, the road agent is able to negotiate with the paving company. Because the roads that are planned to be done are so close, we can get Sawyer Road done, or these projects done, and save the town between 11,000 and 12,000 dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, then article eight, to see if the town is going to vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 45,000, 40,551 dollars for the 19 Mile Bay Beach Improvement Project. Selectman 3-0, budget committee 5-1. This is the.
Need to rehabilitate the perch beach, stabilize the, the tanning wall, and also the access to the water for, at the boat launch, I believe, isn't it, there's some sort of. We've got the, um, plan underway, we have the funding process started.
Article nine then, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 45,000, 870 dollars for the 19 Mile Brook Update Baseline Study. This was a 3-0 vote by selectman, the budget committee votes 6-0. This is being done in reaction to the Wolfborough change and the rapid infiltration system they have for their, for their, you know, their sewerage. Selectmen feel that it's important to have a good idea of where we stand right now. This study done many, many years ago, but as now they're into Tufton Borough property, or Tufton, Tufton Borough lines, but virtually they're acquisitions of property. It's very important to find out where we are before this really starts to kick in. So, we have something to go back on against.
So, we have already concluded a review of the 2008 baseline study and made some, the Normandov associates that are going to do this particular study, if it's really for by the, by the town. But unless we establish a firm's current baseline going forward, we're going to have some issues. They did notice in the review of the 2008 to present, records in Wolfborough, that there were some spikes when Wolfborough started their, their system up. But it only, the operation of the system only lasted a few months before it failed. They're still operating under the assumption that they're going to put in 300 to 600,000 gallons worth of ethylene into that watershed. So, the selectmen felt, and I guess the project committee can occur, that we really need to know what's happening there in case we have to go for season assist.
Is there any way that the state could require that Wolfborough do this testing?
Well, unfortunately, they're working under a current, or the permit that they were issued originally with modifications. And there was no comment made by the Tufton Borough Conservation Commission during those hearings to create that permit. So, we did have a meeting with the select board, or one, one selectman, an employee from Wolfborough. And at, during that meeting, it was that this school's raised. We need to fund a baseline study for 19 Mile Brook. They really, they weren't willing to do that.
Should we reach out to the state and make it known that we feel this is important?
The, my understanding is the permit that they're currently under is going to lapse in a year or at most two, at which point this is going to have to be revisited. But they're not willing, their, their feeling is, and I can't speak for them, but my, my sense is that they're fully vested in this new technology, and they want to see it happen. So, they're not really willing to have a long conversation about. So they're not really willing to have a long conversation about our needs. And we don't really have information enough to go to battle. And this, this warrant article will essentially start that process so we can see what the effect is on the wildlife and on the water quality.
Well, I, it needs to be done, I don't think there's any question, but.
Well, looking.
It should be up to us to run all of it.
Looking forward, you know, I made mention of this at a Selectmen, Selections meeting here today, is if we have a ten-year program here, we've got a half a million dollars. We've got a fire truck sitting right here. Because if we have to pay this bill every year, and it'll be forty or forty-five thousand dollars, it's going to add up to a lot of money. So at some point in time, and that's one of the reasons why the legal lines are a little higher this year, is we're going to have to get into the, into the regular Wolfborough, get some sort of accommodation for an expense that we don't, it's not our expense. It's not something that we created.
Probably paid for being downstream.
No.
That's what sometimes comes back.
Have we considered buying property in Wolfborough and putting our transfer station there?
Yeah, I, I think that actually crossed my mind, but.
Recycle.
Yeah, I don't know that Quiddpro closed the way to go.
A vicious cycle.
Yeah. But, I mean, not to digress too far, but when they say a particular chemical allowance is two parts per million or three parts per, per million, and they're pumping up a half a million gallons a day, you're only talking about a couple of days and you've got a gallon of that stuff sitting on the ground. A year, you've got a fifty gallon drum. You know, three years, you've got a circle site. So that's one of my concerns, is that I don't think this magic gravel up on the wooden property is going to absorb all of those chemicals, but.
What about chemicals?
Chemicals?
Trebuchet. Yeah, trebuchet, trebuchet of Wolfborough.
I think we have the pipeline in downtown Beach.
Moving on, then, Article ten, the city of town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars to pay a second installment towards a fire truck required in two thousand eighteen, as approved by voters pursuant to Article six. At the two thousand eighteen town meeting, the principal amount is one hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars, with interest of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. This five-year lease agreement contains escape costs, voted by the Selectmen three zero and the Budget Committee six zero. Questions on that? Article eleven, see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars to pay a fourth installment towards the ambulance vehicle and rescue truck acquired in two thousand sixteen, as approved by voters pursuant to Articles six and seven of the two thousand sixteen town meeting. The principal amount is eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars, the interest is four thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. It's a five-year lease agreement, it doesn't contain escape costs. Voted by the Selectmen three zero and the Budget Committee seven zero. Article twelve, the city of town will vote to establish contingency fund for current year for unanticipated exit expenses that may arise and further to raise and appropriate five thousand dollars to put into the fund. Says some to come from the undesigned, excuse me, unassigned fund balance. An appropriation left in the fund at year end will naps into the general fund. Voted by the Selectmen three zero and the Budget Committee seven zero. This is the contingency fund, someone comes up. Finally, Article fifteen, the city of town will vote to raise and appropriate, the Budget Committee recommends some of, as of this evening, three million, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, three hundred and seven for general town operations. The Selectmen recommend that three million, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars for five hundred, excuse me, three million, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. The article does not include any special individual warrant articles. Recommended by our Selectmen and the Budget Committee by our vote tonight.
So the comment was made that the regular operating budget is up seventy-eight percent over last year. If all of the warrant articles are approved, what will the two thousand nineteen budget be compared to two thousand eighteen?
Did I party shop there? Did you do a party charge?
Oh, no, we will. The, it is finer than two thousand eighteen. But I think that.
Is it on the chart?
No, it's not on the chart. The chart is just the operating. In the, right, in the seven thirty-seven. On page ten, I think they, the warrant articles are included here. But they don't, you don't have a complete number of what it was last year because the total spending for the operating budget is not included in that bill.
And it, I think we'll prepare a tax in town meeting, but part of the warrant articles from last year were things that were going to be expended over time. So if it says six hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the warrant articles, a part of that is your fire engine, which is going to go into our town.
I didn't hear it, sorry.
It's not the same as the library, which is going to get all the heat at once. So the amount of money going out is not, needs some explanation. Because we voted on, I, I don't know if I'm right, but we voted on a fire engine for four thousand, three hundred thousand dollars.
But the only budget for first year.
Right, the only budget for first year to stand up, represent. But I keep the MS seven thirty-seven, which warrants if you put all of my MS to vote on.
So you don't really have any idea how it compares to what we actually had to spend in two thousand eighteen on warrant articles versus what we'll have to spend in two thousand nineteen?
I don't have any information on law. It doesn't page ten on the seven thirty-seven. Well, yeah, it does give you the.
Excuse me. On the last two pages of the operating budget document is a warrant article comparison. It's not the MS seven thirty-seven, but you have a document. That would be, to me, a big question. For that, for the operating budget.
But again, that's a gross amount and not, not a net amount. So the gross amount is two thousand four eighty-four.
Can you take page ten of the MS seven thirty-seven and add the warrant articles? Who has the estimated revenue credit? It looks like the warrant articles for this year, they're all to be paid this year, they aren't any.
Except for the, they can have it in at nine point eight million dollars. And the amount that would be paid is only three hundredths of a thousand.
Okay, so you put that in there.
This information will be in the town report.
We have our own.
Still have to do the town.
It's still have to be the town relations, but they're not saying.
Moving on, then, five-year operating actual budget history graph.
Um. Just while we look at this one, which is what we're spending this year. As you, it's not that different from last year. The bulk of what we spend is for public safety through the fire department and the police and infrastructure through the transfer station and the highway. Fire department this year is twenty-five percent of the budget. Police department is sixteen percent. Transfer station and the, and the highway are both thirteen percent. Executive and financial administration is also sixteen percent. And the others are smaller. As far as by expense tag, fifty-one percent of our budget is spent on salaries and benefits. The next bigger areas are administrative assistance and road maintenance. It's not that different from prior years. And then if you look at a five-year history, everybody's up just a little bit this year, mostly because of salaries, because of the fifty-third week and the two point seven cost of living increase. The fire department is twenty-five percent of the budget. Police department is sixteen percent of the budget. Transportation and the highway departments are both thirteen percent. Any questions?
How often does the fifty-three week happen?
One to five years.
Four to five years.
I think it's every five years. It's been a while. It's been a while. Every four years.
Only happens after the fourth year.
I'm going to ask that question Helen hates to have really. If the budget, if you're comparing the budgeted amount to the actual expenditures, it's up about seven point two percent or there about spread, eight.
Comparing the, if, if last year number is actual, which is what is on here, what was actually spent, it's an eight percent, the budget is an eight percent increase over that.
But budget to budget is.
Seven point two.
Seven point two.
Seven point two, seven point two, thank you.
Thank you. I heard that behind me. Thank you very much.
Other questions on the graph? Okay, moving on to our last order of business for the evening is going to be revenue, our anticipated revenue. We are going to have some change this year. Revenues do not look, at least at the outset, to be as good as they were last year. Some of the big changes are in man use. In two thousand eighteen, we have fifty thousand dollars. The Selectmen this year are forecasting ten thousand dollars. Penalties and interest, last year over forty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars this year, they're being forecast at twenty-five thousand dollars. This is because the state of the country, their legislature, their wisdom decided they could set their interest rates for people who were to make it in their taxes and so it's happened. And then they were the rate to, for what, twelve and a half to eight and a half, Jeff, that number?
It's.
Jeff?
I'm sorry?
Interest rates for.
I don't exactly, I can't recall exactly what they are.
It was like, went from like twelve percent to eight percent.
Twelve, yeah, twelve.
So one might ask why the state didn't reduce them for the interests and penalties on taxes that they charge individuals, but they chose to keep that the same.
As I said earlier, concrete give up and they take it away. Uh, let's see, some of the other, other big one this year that we're not going to be seeing is the sale of tax-dated property. Last year was a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And this year, the Selectmen are only, only anticipating thirty thousand dollars. Therefore, on our revenue side, as we sit right now, we're looking to shortfall about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the wells last year. I wish I had better do this for you in that one, but.
Well, it was a conservative estimate on our part. I mean, as far as the tax duty sales, that's going to change. It's already changed, I think. Never mind.
Well, I can't even put my, I should say.
If we overestimate revenues, then we undercollect taxes and then we run out of money before we.
Let me call ourselves Carroll County.
Right, so.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying. And if the revenues in these areas come in particularly strong, that gives us the opportunity to apply more of that against the tax rate when we set it in the fall.
I thought the state was going to gradually increase the amount that they were supposed to be giving us for meals and rooms tax. Are they still holding it where they are?
We haven't got notification of any increases, so it's, the estimate that we have is the same as, the rate is the same as two thousand eighteen. And it's based on population, not based on how many times you go out to that restaurant.
I'm just looking at when I rent my campout during the summer, how much per week I give to the state. And I don't see it coming back this direction.
It doesn't come back exactly the same. There was a bill that we were reading at our last Selectmen's meeting about a change in the donor town status of money. Currently, the money goes to the state, comes back to the school district, but they want to eliminate the coming back to the school district, which would be about a million and a half dollar change or increase in our taxes.
And the latest I heard on that is.
Do you see your local representative on the street? But feel free to drive over when you're caught.
The latest I heard on that particular bill is that provision was, was stripped out of that bill and they're going to add it to another bill. So it's not going away, it's just going to come up under a different cup.
Do you mean a million dollars for Tufton Borough or a million dollars for Kingswood?
No, Tufton Borough. So if, if you look at the taxes that we pay to the school, for schools, there are two lines. All right. I don't have it here in front of me, but the, and they both go to the school district right now. But the second line is the, is a statewide tax. So on an ongoing or a recurring basis, we hear noise out of Concord about, well, we're, we're just going to, we're not going to let this statewide portion of the tax stay with the town. We're going to take it to Concord and then we'll redistribute it someplace else. But the net effect on us is because that's money that we collect and give to our local school district, if we don't collect that and give it to the local school district, they got to get money someplace else, which means that the, the other piece that we pay goes up. So we're watching it carefully at this point.
The other piece that we're watching is the utility taxes. And there's some settlement agreements that have been thrown out there. And I, I think by and large have all been rejected. But the utilities don't want us to tax their property and put them on the value. They want to come up with some other strange amount that I, I figured out won't. They want to come up with some other strange amount that I figured out at one point was something less than ten percent of what it costs to put a miler utility in. But the one with Coop, the Coop fascinates me because I don't, I don't think the Cooperics, or, New Hampshire Electric Coop is a for-profit business, but they're looking for a two hundred thousand dollars average just for refund of overpaid taxes. And my position with the chairman was we'll give them the two hundred thousand bucks as long as they equally distribute it to all the people that buy cooperative electric insurance, or electricity from them.
And as an update on that, there is, there is a bill in the House now that's, that will set a formula to be uniformly used by all municipalities. And it includes something for everybody not to like, so it's probably a pretty good piece of legislation. My understanding is if it's impacted, the amount of taxes that we collect from utilities will be less than what we do now. But it will not be nearly as much less as the utilities would like to see. And some of the provisions in this legislation, as I understand it, is, won't go into effect until all of the existing challenges at the Board of Tax and Land Appeal and through the court system are done and settled, which encourages all these utilities to get them done quickly. And the formula set in the new law can't be used retroactively. So they can't take that and say, well, based on this, we want to go settle these old ones for whatever it is. So we'll see where it goes. But it's been a long, a long, slow slog as Carolyn thinks. We've been involved in those challenges for at least six, seven years, and they're not over yet, so.
Well, that's all we have for this evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're coming before we have to close. And I'd like to thank Tom for, for running in for years of service. And I would also thank all the members that have made it for your good work this fall, this winter. Awesome numbers, difficult decisions tonight, but thank you for your help, did a great job. And with that, I would be happy to move into adjournment.
Move second.
Move the second dose of paper. Thank you very much.